You can go ahead and start.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, uh, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's, uh, six oh one, uh, January seventh, twenty 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 one. Uh, I'm Mark Kiesewag. I'm the Director of Community Planning and Development for, for the Township, and I'd like to welcome everybody, uh, to this hearing we're gonna hold tonight. Uh, the hearing is regarding the, uh, minor amendments to the mixed-use plan unit development and the special use permit for the Village of Okemos Development that was granted by the Township Board back on July ninth, uh, twenty nineteen. Amendments are allowed by the ordinance to be made to approve mixed-use planning developments or, uh, special use permits. There's two types of amendments or two categories. Uh, they're deemed either to be a major or a minor amendment. Uh, and the ordinance gives the Director the, the ability to make that decision on major or minor amendments. Uh, when a request comes, we do do a review, and there is some guidance given in the ordinance, standards or criteria that will set if a project is gonna be, or I should say an amendment, it's gonna be major or minor. If it exceeds those standards, then it's automatically deemed as a major amendment. If it falls below or doesn't exceed those standards, then it's, then it's a, a minor amendment. Uh, just a quick examples of major amendments would be something like a ten percent or greater increase in the total square footage of all the buildings on a project. Uh, an increase of more than one hundred vehicle trips during a peak hour of traffic. Uh, adding additional land or property to development all could be deemed as major. When this proposal first came to us, we did meet several times with the, the developer to, to discuss the amendment. We spent a significant amount of time with the staff reviewing, discussing, and looking at this, this amendment. And at the end of that, it came to the conclusion this would fall as a minor amendment. And as a minor amendment, I do, as the Director, I have to hold this public hearing which we're doing tonight. Uh, the process for the public hearing is we're gonna start with a staff introduction. Uh, our principal planner, Peter Menzer, is gonna do that. Uh, after that, we're gonna go to the applicant so they can go through, uh, the amendment and talk about the changes. And then the third one is public comments. I will mention that we did receive, as of this afternoon, twenty-one communications regarding the amendment. All of those will be made, uh, part of the public record. If, if you do plan on giving, um, a comment tonight, uh, please use the raised hand or put your hand up, and Peter will call on you to speak. Uh, when you're called on, if you please give your name and address for the record, and we would also ask you if you could keep your comments to three minutes. Uh, if you have questions during your public comment, uh, what we're going to do is we're going to track those questions and come back at the end and answer those questions. What I would like to do is to allow everybody to make their public comments, come back and then ask the, either the applicant or staff to go through and answer those, uh, questions for you. Uh, there won't be any decision tonight on, on the amendment. The zoning ordinance gives the Director sixty days to make that decision, and I can approve it, approve it with conditions or deny the amendment. So to start tonight, I'm gonna ask, uh, Peter Menzer to introduce the amendment.
Hi, thanks, Mark. So I, I think most of you know me, but my name is Peter Menzer and the Principal Planner in our Department of Community Planning and Development. Um, I've been at the Township since two thousand and six and worked on a lot of projects, including, um, the Village Focus. So I just wanted, before we get too far along, I want to orient everyone to where the materials are that you need to, uh, participate in the meeting tonight and consider the request. So the packet for tonight's meeting, it doesn't really consist of a lot, but is on the Township website under, it's on the homepage right now, under the Meetings tab, and there's an entry for tonight's meeting, the public hearing. So in there, you'll find, um, a very brief memo from me to Mark, just outlining some of the changes in the project, but also you'll find the plans for the project as well as the communications that we've received to date. That's as of three thirty this afternoon. I haven't gotten any since then. You'll also find the meeting agenda. Mark just went over that. But, and so after, um, we do everything here, you'll, public comment, a couple of you I know do want to speak. So as Mark mentioned, you'll use the raised hand feature, and I'll be managing through the Zoom interface here. So please be patient with us as we do that, because it's kind of cumbersome. And, um, also, there are two, you'll note there in the notice you may have received, there are two different things being discussed tonight. One is the amendment to the mixed-use planning development, and one is the amendment to the special use permit. They are two separate permits, two separate processes, but for the sake of convenience, we're gonna talk about those, hold the hearing together tonight. So there's not gonna be two separate hearings, but one at the same time. So, uh, while we're here, Mark mentioned it's amendment to the MEPD and SUP for this project. The MEPD is really the land use permit, and the special use permit is for the size. So in the Meridian, anything twenty-five thousand square feet or over requires approval from our, um, requires a special use permit. So in that, both these are applicable in this case for this project. So the, originally, the mixed-use planning development and special use permit were approved by our Township Board in last July in twenty nineteen. And that, so those were done, they went through the Planning Commission and to the Township Board and approved in July. The project area, I think we all know, but just to reiterate, is limited to the two blocks on the west side of Oakmas Road. One block on the north side of Hamilton, little block on the south side. You'll see there's been recent demolition work in those areas, so that's where we're talking about. At different times during this project, there have been other areas talked about, but at this point, these permits are limited to just those two blocks. So a real quick summary of the project, I'm not gonna put the site plan on the screen, but hopefully you're able to find it through the meeting packet or through the applications portion of the Township website. If you haven't, I would encourage you to pull it up, uh, to follow along. But if I put it on the screen, it's just too small to, to really see for anybody. The, as it was approved on July twenty nineteen, the total size of the development was two hundred and ninety plus square, thousand square feet. There were two hundred and five dwelling units, which are apartments, in the proposal, and fifty-two thousand square feet of commercial area. With an overall residential density of fifty-one dwelling units per acre. And when I talk about density tonight, I do want to make everybody clear there, um, you know, the Township Board did adopt an ordinance to remove the density cap for projects in downtown Okemos and downtown Hazlet. So some of these numbers are larger than you may be used to hearing about, but that this, um, that was approved by the board and is included in, in our ordinance, and that's how this project was approved. The proposed changes include a very slight increase in overall building size, uh, just a twelve, almost a thirteen hundred square foot increase. There is a reduction in the amount of commercial space of possibly nineteen thousand square feet. So the total of commercial space in the project is, uh, will be approximately thirty-two thousand square feet. There'll be an increase of eighty-one dwelling units, bringing the total from two hundred and five to two hundred and eighty-six. And that, um, equals out to a residential development, residential density of approximately seventy-one dwelling units per acre. Uh, also included in this is a conversion of the subsurface parking garage to two-story parking decks, and those are, will be one on each in Block One and Block Two. So as Mark mentioned, amendments are allowed, I just want to reiterate this as well. Amendments are allowed for both MEPD and SUP, um, in our ordinance, classified as minor or major. Um, they have corresponding criteria for each. In this case, um, our staff has reviewed the proposed projects, and we classified this as minor amendments, minor changes. Um, there really are, there are no significant changes to the building footprints, the building size, building setbacks, or increases in traffic generation, nor are there any waivers. Um, those of you that are familiar with MEPD process, instead of a, in, there are aspects of the project that may not meet our underlying zoning ordinance. Instead of having to go through our zoning board appeals process, those are all incorporated into the MEPD approval. So when the board saw the project in twenty nineteen, they've granted waivers for different elements of the project, such as parking. In this case, there are no changes to the project that have, um, caused any change to the waivers originally granted by the board. So really, for all those reasons, we considered this a minor amendment and thus going through this process, which, um, we're having here tonight. So as Director Kiesewag mentioned, he, um, the decision authority rests with him. So he'll make a decision within sixty days of tonight's hearing, and very likely much, much sooner than that. The process moving forward, just so you're all kind of on the same page, um, if the amendment is approved, the pro, the applicant will go on to what we call site plan review. It's a detailed review by staff, and really the focus is on utilities and confirmation of outside agencies like the road department or Ingle County Drain Office. We do have a public hearing for site plan review, so before you see any shovels moving or dirt moving beyond demolition, uh, we will have a site plan review hearing and another application and a final set of plans and all that. So, um, this is still really where in the land use permit phase of this project, but this is the bridge to get to the next steps. And after we grant site plan review approval, they would be able to move on to building permits and construct a project. So that's, um, my spiel for here, and we're gonna move on to the applicant, and the applicant has a team of people, and Will, if you could, I'm kind of manning the, uh, the Zoom interface here, so if there's somebody that you want called up, just let me know, say their name, and I will move them up.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Uh, I assume you want me to take it from here? Um, I, uh, I, I have asked several members of my team to join us tonight, uh, uh, and I just wanted to mention who, who is on, on the meeting tonight with me. And I've got Greg Presley, Presley Architecture. Greg is the lead architect on the project. Uh, A.J. Patrick from Kev's Engineering is the project engineer and, uh, is very intimately involved in the preparation of the, of the site plan that we're looking at tonight. Uh, I've also got Eric Helsner with Advanced Redevelopment Solutions, uh, and he is involved very much so in the demo as well as all of the environmental aspects of, of the site development. And then I also asked Scott Weaver to join. John, Scott is a, is, is a landowner partner and, and a critical piece of this whole program, obviously, with the relocation of the Douglas J Salon as the primary anchor tenant for the project. Uh, so I asked Scott to join us also, just, uh, to be available to answer any questions that might come up. I'm going to, uh, to assume that, uh, that, that everyone is educated on the project to this point, because we've done a, I think, made a tremendous effort to, uh, to, to keep the, the public informed through social media and otherwise. But, uh, we're happy that we're, we're making progress right now with demolition. And just so the public knows, the demolition, uh, process is ahead of schedule, and we anticipate that to be finished up by the end of January. Uh, I would like to say that we're, you're gonna see a, a seamless transition into vertical construction, but we're not there yet. We're still hopeful that we're gonna see a, a project coming out of the ground this summer. Uh, but a lot of that is gonna be dependent upon the, the world as we know it today, uh, as a result of, of COVID nineteen. Uh, that's my segue into the primary reason for the, uh, for the ask of a minor amendment. And it's simply that we wanted to, uh, to put this project in a better position to, to perform financially in a post-COVID world uh, and anticipate changes in financing, uh, or at least, uh, changes in the underwriting criteria for financing of projects of this scale. Uh, we have been advised to remove any of the commercial pro, uh, square footage that we can and reposition it as residential. The reason for that is residential is still showing strong performance. Uh, probably goes unsaid that commercial, restaurant, especially commercial, and in particular office are very, very challenged right now. And I think we're gonna see, see some real, uh, some real waves through the market over the next period of time. That being said, what we're doing basically, uh, is preserving the, the corridor along Hamilton Road to the north and south of Hamilton Road, still having that for shops and restaurant locations. We've incorporated Douglas J's new salon and barbershop into the south side of Hamilton Road, and we've converted the office space that was proposed along Oakmas Road in, into first-floor residential use. Also, we will be building those ceiling heights to a height that would give us some flexibility to modify and go back to a live-work unit or some type of hybrid office use if we see that there's a demand there for that, but it could also serve as the first floor of a, of a two-story townhome or a, or a small flat on the, on the first level. So we have gone in and redesigned schematic design of, of the project, and we're in the process right now of, of repricing the project, uh, and running the feasibility. Uh, and so we're gonna continue that process and hope that the world comes back into alignment, uh, in, in the near future. But in the meantime, Peter, the, the, the ask for us is, is basically to change the use of some of the square footage of the buildings. We're not, we're not going to make any real modifications to the, to the, uh, to the scan, to the envelope. We're just changes the uses with, within that envelope. Uh, so we're going to also, uh, in this, in this program, we're gonna look at the possibility of breaking this into two blocks, and we'll be talking about that and the phasing strategy. So all those decisions are gonna get made in the next few months as the underwriting continues for the project. In the meantime, we're making progress and one step closer to shovel-ready. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Was there anyone else on your team I need to call up right now?
I don't think so. Uh, I just wanted them to be available to answer, mainly answer any questions that come up from, whether that be from staff or, or otherwise. So, uh, uh, no need to, uh, to dwell on this.
Cool. All right, thanks. And then, so if Mark mentioned earlier, we'll, we'll circle back around and address any questions if we have to after a public comment.
So if people are ready, we're ready to start public comment. So again, just use the raised hand feature or raise your hand up so that Peter can see it and call on you.
And also, please keep in mind that I only see whatever name you've put in your Zoom thing, so if it says iPhone, I might not know who you are. And, um, so consider changing that if possible. All right, first Neil Bowlby. So what I'm gonna do, you're gonna have a slight delay. I'm gonna go to each of you, allow you to speak. And I've got, there's a whole, you know, twenty, whatever, twenty-first century, um, challenges in that, so it's gonna take just a couple seconds each time. Okay, um, well, I can't find Neil.
I can see him. Would you like me to promote him, sir?
Yeah, please.
And would you like him as a panelist, or do you just want me to enable?
No, I'll, yeah, I, I found him. Sorry, they were hidden at the top. All right, I'm gonna, I didn't know that the names went up. I'll, I'll do it. Thanks, Stephen. All right, Neil. Thank you. You're on.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Neil Bowlby, six oh two oh Beachwood. Uh, I'd like to start with a couple of questions of staff. First of all, to the Director, uh, what criteria do you use in determining whether to approve uh, the project or the, 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 uh, application or deny it? Uh, second one is, are you considering consulting either the Planning Commission or the Township Board to get their take on the whole thing? Uh, certainly consulting the Township Board and getting a feel for where they stand may avert any potential appeal if you decide the way somebody doesn't want you to decide. Uh, a question for the developer, for Will, and you don't have to answer it now, or you're gonna answer later. It looked like on the plans that there were indications of utility poles along Oakmas Road, and my understanding was that utilities were going to be buried. So I'm asking whether utilities are going to be buried or whether those poles are actually going to be there, or they just showing where the poles are right now. Uh, as far as comments on the project, I'm not in favor of it as proposed. I would suggest that the, uh, total number of units be kept at two hundred and five, and if they want to convert, uh, or have less commercial space, then the whole size of the project should come down. Uh, as mentioned when I talked to Will, that, that you can't make the project smaller because there would be a loss of TIF funds. Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the, uh, total amount of TIF request was upwards of four hundred thousand, four hundred fifty thousand dollars. And so if the project were a little bit smaller and didn't bring quite as much TIF money in, that would certainly be made up by the eighty-nine thousand dollar gift that the developer just got from the township in that application, uh, a couple of months ago. Uh, I think everybody needs to keep in mind that there's still a third block to be developed, and so if they didn't get to put in as much residential in this part, they could certainly, if, adjust it in the, uh, development of the third block, depending on whether more commercial or more residential is, is what brings in the money. Uh, and if commercial does give a better return than, uh, than residential does, that, that was the indication that I got, was that commercial square footage brings a higher return than, uh, than residential. Uh, it would be more incentive then to, when, uh, if the market turns around to convert some of the residential that's being, uh, put into where the commercial is now to be converted back to commercial in the future. So I look forward to answers to those questions and comments from the developer. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Next is Jade Sims. Jade, you're on with the Director.
All right, thank you so much. Um, my name is Jade Sims on Arbor Drive in Okemos. I'm also the Chair of the Meridian Economic Development Corporation, and we just wanted to go on record, on public record, um, with a statement, um, regarding, regarding the Village of Okemos. So, um, this is in direct response to the concerns of the public that we have been hearing, um, regarding the proposed changes to the development. The Meridian Economic Development Corporation has been consulted regarding this project since its inception. Um, we know these developers to be strong community partners through their creation of the elevation apartments, which are down near Jolly, um, and Oakmas Roads. So as township residents ourselves, um, the twelve members of the Meridian EDC um, are unanimously in support of Director Kiesewag's, uh, initial assessment that the revised changes to the MEPD be, um, considered minor modifications. Um, we understand the changes, the commercial space to be minimal, um, a minimal adjustment to the initial square footage. Uh, in addition, the request, the requested change is a minor reduction in proposed office space, and the total square footage of the building is not significantly affected, as mentioned. Um, and also, as mentioned, you know, the office market currently is in low-demand period, and it's projected to be that way for this foreseeable future. Um, and if the market situation changes, the revised plan does include this option to adapt to the market and make the best use of that space at that time. So, you know, working together with residents, developers, elected and appointed officials and staff, um, our projects and efforts of the EDC aim to continue making Meridian a prime community. Um, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jade. Next is Vance. Okay, Vance, you're ready to go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm timed. I've kind of knew that it's Zoom stuff. Anyhow, but I, I would like to, uh, uh, just say that I think this amendment, uh, should go uh, back for consideration or discussion, at least at the Planning Commission. Uh, this is a request to, uh, change the use of the, or a request to change, uh, of the use of the development, and it, it has been approved as a mixed-use development. But with the, uh, uh, change with this amendment, uh, and with a lot of the commercial space going, uh, to Douglas J, uh, there'll be hardly any commercial in this mixed-use development. There's just no, uh, no, hardly any room left, and I know, and if we're just talking about this one block, this one project, uh, there's practically none except for the, uh, Douglas J, which is already there. So you're not really adding much development, uh, commercial development in a mixed-use project at all. Uh, it doesn't, any discussion by the, uh, Planning Commission, uh, wouldn't, doesn't seem, wouldn't seem to put in a delay um, on the project, guy, actual development, because they, they say they're not, or haven't signed any contracts for development. Uh, and I think it's important that, uh, given this, uh, PICA process that, uh, development that, uh, the community have as much opportunity for input as possible. Therefore, I could see it going back, uh, as a discussion, uh, issue with the Planning Commission. I, uh, it might be, you could make it maybe a condition or something, uh, that they just provide insight. I know how the board feels about the project, but, uh, I think every chance for public input should be provided. And if I had a question, it would be, uh, uh, how much, uh, or is there any, what is occurring or any participated, uh, uh, tip, uh, fund requests, uh, that would be coming now or in the future? Thank you.
Thanks, Vance. Okay, I don't see any additional hands. Uh, there we go. Thanks, Renee. Okay, we have Renee Corey. You're on.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, hey, you know, so I wanted everybody else to have a chance to speak before I chimed in, and I'm actually here wearing two hats tonight, so my first hat is that of the DDA Chair. Uh, the Downtown Development Authority unanimously supports this project. We have from the beginning. And, uh, we will continue, and I've heard some comments on social media and, you know, through different channels indicating that this kind of project is probably just rubber stamped at this point. And I want to say that as far as the DDA is concerned, um, we don't rubber stamp anything. If it doesn't pass our, pass our smell test, uh, we don't support it, and I can tell you that we do. Uh, and now my other hat, as a resident who probably can take less than fifty steps out my front door onto the project. I'm about as close to the project as you can get. And I was disappointed to hear that we're gonna lose some commercial frontage on Oakmas Road. That is not enough for me to be overly concerned, and I'll tell you why. Um, it's not a perfect project. It probably never will be, because we'll never get all the residents and Meridian Township to agree on one thing. But I can tell you this, that my solace, my peace comes in knowing that the developer is, um, very ethical, very transparent, and very honest. And so when I read some of these comments on social media about a bait and switch, I am confident that that did not occur. And, uh, so I want to, for anybody that's listening, I want to let them know that I, you know, I'm validating their feelings. I'm, I'm really trying to listen to everything that people are saying in our community. And what I also want to do is reassure them that, um, if we have any, uh, good chance with the developer, this one is the one, and in fact, in today's society, we don't do this, but if we were in the day of making deals with a handshake, that is a handshake I would make with the man. So I am hoping that, uh, for the people that have any concerns about any improprieties, hidden agendas and that type of thing, that they can perhaps put that aside and trust that- hidden agendas and that type of thing, that they can perhaps put that aside and trust that my gut and my experience as a resident, I'm almost 67, I've been here over 60 years, coming and going. And my gut's usually pretty right on. And that's what I have to say for tonight.
Thanks Renee. Our Department Director of Economic Development, Amber Clark, has her hand raised.
Thank you, Principal Planner Messner. Good evening Township and Director Kieselbach, I'm going to speak on behalf of the Village of Okemos Development. Many of you know, this has been a fast track for me. So being specifically hands-on with this project, it's only been about three months. But I've been a resident of this community since 2015. And I remember the first times coming to this community, that Four Corners, not really screaming that this is a downtown and this is a place where we want people to be. We currently have a developer who owns the land is willing to invest. And this total investment could, you know, be end up being in the area of $5 million of somewhat of, you know, a talented group that has already shown that they're capable of doing this kind of work in our community. And including roadwork, which I come with experience working in the city of Jackson. And that is not ever guaranteed that a developer is going to be interested in doing public roadwork in order to make an area more easily to traverse for pedestrians and for vehicles. The comments about how much commercial space, we're going to lose commercial space as a term and definition can be convoluted, I believe. We're thinking commercial space in the sense of all space in which non-residential space or non-residential actions would happen. And that includes office, that includes commercial retail. And that is the commercial space that was originally planned for this development. And we are just taking out the office space. So we're taking out traditionally space that will be occupied by people just sitting in, you know, in a space for eight hours of the day and then leave. As opposed to putting in a resident who is going to occupy the space for long periods of time. The remaining amount of commercial space available on the development will be able to add anywhere between eight to 10 small boutiques, very similar to the size of space of established businesses on the other side of Okemos Road in the downtown development area. So we're not really as a community missing out on a lot on much that we're in need of. And we will keep the retail. It will still be walkable. It will add all the residents you need in order to establish your big box office or perhaps a restaurant or something else that you really are going to need an influx of new residents living in a particular area in order to support. So I am in complete support of this project. I know for at least two years, the community reached out to the Community Development Planning Office and requested that something be done with the Four Corners. And and Meridian Township staff listened and they took action. The board took action. And now we're here at a point to make the project go forward. And so I really hope that we support this amendment and that we can keep this project moving in the right direction.
Thanks Amber. Next, we have a someone identified as LG. LG, you're on.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me please?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to thank the board in the first place for giving us this opportunity to provide comments and for all the hard work that you guys did. I think I have just a few questions first. Did you have a chance to redo the analysis of traffic in this area? It is very difficult, as you know, to make a left turn from Hamilton into Okemos Road or or to go forward on Hamilton Road. I'm not quite sure how this change will will affect traffic. And so that's the one thing that that I am concerned with. Another is, is there, is there any thinking about ownership versus renting? Because I think the focus of this community is to build it up. And people who live here and own properties certainly will contribute very positively to to this community versus people who are renting might not be so enticed to do so. I think these are essentially the two questions that I have. Also, I think I forgot to introduce my full name for the record is Leshek Gauraki and I live on Tacoma Hills of in Okemos. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Bill McConnell. You're on Bill.
Thank you, everybody. Great to hear. I can't tell you how excited I am to see the progress going on down there at Four Corners. That's just heartwarming and in a cold time where we can only use some heartwarming. I'm really interested in this notion of reconfigurable space. And since Mr. Randall has brought all these experts with him this evening, I really love to hear. I heard the 20-foot ceilings kind of being retained. So you have that option to go in that direction. But if there's other aspects of reconfiguration, that's really interesting in terms of being able to adapt to time. So if somebody can speak to that, I'd love to hear it. And I'm also trying to wrap my head around how to design a front, any kind of entrance on Okemos Road. And I don't have the, I have a hard time reconfiguring a bathroom. So how you you build a front entrance on Okemos Road, you guys have experts that can talk to that. I'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Thanks Bill. We have Cindy, Cindy Piccolo.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes, I'm Cindy Piccolo. I'm a Tacoma Hills resident. And Leshek and Bill McConnell are both my neighbors. And I'm in Tacoma Hills and I've been here for 34 years. I'm also on the Tacoma Hills Homeowners Association. And Will Randall has spoke at our annual meeting one year, I believe it was like two years ago. So we are very excited to have this project finally getting underway. And with that excitement, we were hoping to get the commercial space in there. You, I have been looking at this corner for 34 years. And we did have a little restaurant down there. We had the hardware store and we had the ice cream in there as well. And, you know, that was a real nice place to go and and you know, for a downtown area. But now, understanding that all that retail space will not be replaced is a little disheartening. So it would be nice to have, you know, your coffee shop or your card shop or any kind of retail space down there. I mean, we pass by this several times a day. And to look at a bunch of apartments would not be my ideal vision for downtown Okemos. And I think I can speak for a lot of residents that we're looking for something to look forward to, to go downtown. So I'm putting my vote in for retail space on the lower levels and hopefully that will come to fruition. I know that this pandemic is not going to last forever. I think we're at the tail end of it. And things are going to start to open up. And I'd like to see that become a booming downtown Okemos for the residents. Thank you.
Thanks Cindy. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Don Romaine. Don, you're on with the director.
Thank you, Peter. I appreciate it. Come tonight as a resident, 5420 Joe Pass. Longtime resident and what I have tonight really is just comment. First being myself, my family and my neighbors, as I will attempt to speak for them, are incredibly excited about this project and seeing it actually begin to come to fruition. I want to thank Amber for the comments that she made just a few moments ago. And an excellent clarification on that reduction of commercial space in the form of a reduction of office space and not necessarily retail space. I think that there's a real distinction there that may be getting lost with some folks is thinking this is just going to become a giant apartment complex, which in fact it's not. I think that's actually clear if we listen to the detail. I also would like to just put in a plug of confidence for Will as well as his team. And seeing, reading some of the comments that are made and pointed out earlier, bait and switch, et cetera. What I can say is having known Will now for a period of time, not only is he a person, a business person of great integrity, but I would also like to point out that he and his team have shown incredible perseverance, not only through this this process that we've all been going through and living through here, but also in the face of what COVID-19 has brought to not just this community, but to industry itself. And so I actually, Will, if I were there, I'd shake your hand if COVID-19 protocol allowed for it. And to say thank you for not abandoning this, but instead standing behind it. It's appreciated by the community. So thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Don. Appreciate you calling. Next, we have Elaine Putzman. Elaine, you're on.
Hello, I'm Elaine Putzman. 2003 Pawnee Trail. I also live in Tacoma Hills. Tacoma Hills is in quite a walkable distance, short distance from the Four Corners. I've actually lived here, first moved here when I was six years old. And this was back in the 50s when there were businesses that people could shop at downtown. Two grocery stores, hardware store, two ice cream places, et cetera, dry cleaners. In more recent years, there were a couple of different pizza places on the corner. That has changed so many times. It was most recently the Dancewear Studio or Dancewear Shop. The drugstore with the soda fountain in the basement. I miss all these places, but the downtown area was never very attractive. In fact, there was a doctor's office on the the southeast corner as well. Dr. Breckenfeld's office next to where the bank is now. Anyway, I miss those places. And I would like to see those kinds of businesses again in the downtown area. But I'm a bit concerned about the parking that you've changed. I haven't heard anyone speak about that. Instead of underground parking, it's going to be above ground. And I was understood that part of the underground parking concept was to help with the possible leachate from the contaminated soil from the dry cleaners and possibly the the gas station that used to be there as well. And, you know, I'd like to to know if there's any concerns about leachate and about any soil residue that might still be there. And I'd also like to say that I'm a very active member of the Okemos Community Church, which is kitty corner across just north of the Four Corners on the east side of Okemos Road. And we're very excited to be in very close proximity to this new walkable community. We're even talking about reopening our entrance that we don't use, haven't used in recent years, that's on Okemos Road. It's not really usable because once Okemos Road was widened some years ago, there's no parking along there anymore in front of the church. But it's very conducive to pedestrian traffic. So that's an exciting thing to look forward to. So I guess my main question is about the soil and any contamination there because the river is not far south of there. Thank you very much.
Thanks Elaine. Appreciate you contacting us. Next, we have someone entered under Okemos Barber Shop. So you're on with the team here.
Hi, my name is Vincent Z. I've been involved with the Okemos Barber Shop for many, many years. My father owned it. Now I run it. I'm directly across from would be the northwest corner that we're some I stare at, basically at. My concern is with more apartments, wouldn't it be nice to have more commercial space stare that I stare at? Because that would seem like good for the whole community to bring out instead of more, just having more living space. I guess my feeling is if you're going to build it, we only get one shot to do it right once. And to have more restaurants added other than just one, maybe more, multiple and other businesses added in, I think would work great through here. And I think over time with, by the time it's finished and built, I'm hoping that we're out of this situation that we're in and things get better. And I would hope that people would be able to come in and want to be a part of the community as a business owner. Because businesses bring more people. Instead of being an apartment where you'd get in a car and have to drive either to Williamson or East Lansing or Lansing to do something. I guess that's all I really have to say about it.
Thanks Vincent. Appreciate you contacting us. The last hand I see is our Township Treasure, Phil DeShane. Phil, you're on. Thanks for raising your hand.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. I'm Phil DeShane, Township Treasure. I live at 1383 Silverway Drive in Cornell Woods. Though I spent most of my, the past 35 years in the township, living in Havel. So I understand sides of the of the community, the north and south. The Township Board is aware of these changes, of course, that have been proposed by the developer. We approved a mixed use project. We wanted commercial office and residential. There is less office with the revised proposal, but we think it is a necessary and reasonable request by the developer to make the project viable. Appreciate the comments other residents have made. We, we are in a unique situation with COVID. But the trends that caused for the demise of downtown Havel and downtown Okemos predate COVID by decades. We have grown as a township about 1% a year for the past 20 years. Sadly, our retail space has shrunk by more than 1% a year. And if you want to know why, spend some time on the on the road these days. What do you see on the road? What's the most common commercial vehicle you we see these days? Those Amazon vans. And who do we have to blame for that? No one but ourselves because we like the convenience. We like the savings. We like all the, all the reasons for shopping at Amazon. And Amazon is fulfilling a consumer need, but it's devastating our retail operations. And Amazon is fulfilling a consumer need, but it's devastating our retail operations. So, we've got some realignment to do with retail. No one is quite sure how long this Amazon phenomena or mail order phenomena will go, but it's still happening now. And retail hasn't sadly hit the bottom yet. We're not sure when it will and where it will be. We're hoping to find the bottom soon so it can start to rebound. So, again, the board didn't, wanted more office and commercial. It was part of the mixed use, but the revised proposal did, was understood by the board, and and we're well aware of the reduction in the percentages of commercial office. You know, the four corners in Hazlet are also blighted. And we hired a consultant after meeting with the residents to examine what we could do in the four corners of Hazlet. I came back with a report saying you have 180,000 square feet of retail space at the corner of Hazlet Road and Marsh Road. You need between 40,000 and 80,000 square feet at maximum. So, we're overbuilt by a factor of three and a half. So, we have more and more reconciliation to do and downsizing to do on our retail, the existing retail. And for that reason, the board wasn't going to say, come back to the developer and say, oh, no, you've got to go with the full amount of retail and commercial, because that was your original word. We know, we knew we could stand on principle there and kill the project. And I don't think anyone in this meeting or in the township wants to see the blight we have in downtown Okemos continue. So, it was a way to move forward with a reasonable and carefully thought-out one by Mr. Randall and his investors. So, I want to thank you all for attending. I've been listening, hearing your comments. They will be passed on to the board, and of course, you have Director Kuzel back here who will make this determination. But I want to thank everyone who took the time to attend this meeting and weigh in with your comments. Our neighborhoods are very important to us, and hearing from neighbors via Tacoma Hills and others other ones are extremely important. And of course, to the east, we've got Tacoma Hills, and many residents can walk from there, and the Cedar Bend, of course, to the west. Neighborhoods are important, and we know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Treasure DeShane. Next, we have someone that has identified themselves as a resident. And if you could, please, this is a public hearing, so you will need to, oh, I think we might have lost a resident. All right, sorry, resident. You're gone. I didn't boot you, but you appeared to left. We have someone named Jessica, and please do, for anyone that's using an alias or a shortened version, be sure to say your full name and address when we do call on you. Thank you. All right, here you are, Jessica.
Hi there. Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. I'm Jessica Lawson. I live in Forest Hills 1452. We bought our house here about three years ago, and I just wanted to say, some might know me as Jessica Allen, sorry, on next door, if any of my neighbors are listening, my husband's name. I just wanted to say, thanks for all the comments. Thanks for all the clarification. I certainly, you know, when I first heard on the social media pipeline about the changes and, you know, all of these things, we all thought bait and switch. I mean, we've seen it so many times, you know, go down the street in East Lansing, and you see what they went through with some of their complexes there close to MSU, being promised a beautiful walkable area, and then, you know, long story short, they've got a sidewalk. So, I was certainly really concerned, but after reviewing what you had online a little bit and hearing tonight, I can really, really confidently say, and I hope others will agree, that this doesn't sound like bait and switch at all. It sounds like necessary changes, and the good definitely outweighs the bad. I mean, you know, we appreciate the transparency, and I would like to remind residents that we do, when we do get this, if everything's approved, to support those businesses down there, because this is really a blessing. I mean, there are so many towns and cities and, you know, places suffering and that have blight that hasn't, you know, no end in sight, and for us to get this four corners project done, and it will probably really be beautiful, and we'll all love it in the end despite the hiccups. But you've certainly changed my opinion, so I just want to put my support in there and say thank you so much. And a hi from Sophia.
Thank you, Jessica and Sophia. Appreciate your comments. I have one more name. It's Michael Neville. Michael, you are on with the team. Just to remind you, you'll need to unmute yourself if you, when you are selected.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Mike Neville, Tacoma Hills resident, and also calling today from the Okemos Masonic Lodge. Our comment or questions are concerned is the amendments tonight being proposed in any way, asking for amendments to parking, the amounts of parking, number of spaces. So, we're not sure from the presentation, the changing from subterranean to deck parking, and the changes of use from commercial to residential, how that affects parking. So, those were our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, of the 63 attendees we have here tonight, I don't have any other raised hands, so I'm going to give everyone just a couple of seconds to change their minds, and raise your hand if you'd like to. Okay, a couple of seconds are up. So, thanks for that. What we're going to do now, I think a lot of the development team or our staff, just a couple of seconds to go through. There were a couple of pretty direct questions that were asked that I think are worthy of replies right now, just so we have some information coming out of the meeting tonight. I'm going to close my screen here. I think what I'll do is maybe try to summarize what I wrote down as a question, and Mark, if you could supplement that, because I'm changing people around and taking notes, and maybe I didn't get everything.
I can answer the first two questions. The first question was on what criteria or standards will be used. The standards that the Township Board and the Planning Commission use to make decisions for whether it's a mixed-use planning or development or a special use permit are the same that I have to use in making my decision on this amendment. And as far as consulting with the Planning Commission or the Township Board, we haven't discussed that. There hasn't been any decision made on whether we're to do that or not. And then, I think the next question I had was directed to Will and his team was on the utility poles, and if they're still going to be, if that high tension line will be buried yet.
Yes, yes. That's, the power line being buried is an absolute priority. So, that is still in the cards for the development. And that particular thing would occur during the Okemos Road portion of the construction of the road system, which most likely would happen at the same time the bridge is being worked sometime in 2022. So, that's the expectation, is that would happen then.
Okay. The next one I had, unless you had something different, Peter, is about if there would be any tips or tax increment financing requested in addition for this project.
Yes, there is quite a large TIF that would be requested through the DDA as well as a TIF associated with the brownfield. So, there are tax increment financing pieces that are critical to the developer recovering costs associated with infrastructure and environmental cleanup.
Okay. And I know, Will, the one gentleman asked about traffic, and I know you updated traffic information for this amendment, and maybe you could just walk through and tell us a little bit more about the traffic situation now with the amendment.
Peter, is the traffic study part of the package that you posted?
Yes, so the letter, we did receive a letter that was an update from the traffic consultant that prepared the original report. This was a supplement letter that really talked about the changes in generation. But it is posted to the website under both the applications page and also in tonight's packet.
And I would just encourage, if you look at that, the person-
So, the bottom line is that the traffic is actually going down with the reduction in commercial space.
I would encourage you to take a look at that, and if you have any questions, call me or Peter. We'd be glad to step through it.
It might be frozen, but, so that's-
Uh-oh.
Did we lose Peter?
I think we just lost Peter.
We lost Peter, but I'll continue to assist as I'm able.
Okay. Well, one of the things I can, he's back.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know what's going on.
One of the, one of the things that, overall, that the total number of daily trips with this amendment will go down by 1,054 trips. And that the peak hour, which it would be in the evening, will be reduced overall by 107 trips. But can you, I know you've been working with the road department on improvements to Okemos Road, and maybe that would be helpful to talk to people about that Hamilton-Okemos Road intersection and paving of Okemos Road.
Right. We're looking at, we're pushing the paving of Okemos Road and the infrastructure involved with Okemos Road north and south of the project as a federal road project. So, we have got the road commission to agree in theory to that, and we're moving forward on that concept. But we'll be adding turn lanes south of Clinton going north, where you'll be able to take a left turn lane onto Clinton. You'll also be able to take a left turn headed north on Okemos onto Hamilton Road, which you cannot do today. We'll be adding a southbound left turn lane on Okemos Road where you can turn and go towards the roundabout on Hamilton also. So, we're going to be restoring the flow of traffic in the entire area. Also, we'll be replacing, upgrading the signal at Okemos and Hamilton as well as putting a signal in at Methodist and Okemos as well as Clinton and Okemos. So, there will be three stoplights that will now be coming through the Okemos area that will manage traffic and actually calm traffic coming through the area. So, ironically, you can move more cars at slower speeds. That's something that's hard to grasp, but that's the facts. So, we're looking forward to all those updates and getting the traffic flowing in all directions that, where that's, those movements have been slowly taken away through the years to adjust to particular problems.
The next question I had was the difference between, in this project, ownership of the units as versus rental of the units.
We are, we'll be looking at long-term putting some ownership product in the mix in the Village of Okemos development. In this first phase, it's very difficult. It's problematic for the financing to have a for-sale product mixed in the same building as a condominium with for-rent product. That makes the lenders very uncomfortable. Condominiums still unfortunately have a bad rap associated with what went on back in the mid-2000s and before. So, condominiums can be problematic for financing. And so, you will see some for-sale product, but you will not see it in this early phase of construction. You will probably see it in some of the fringe areas, Mark, as we expand out beyond the core.
And then, the next question, if you could give a little bit more detail on the reconfiguration of the spaces.
The reconfiguration of the spaces, particular, what are you talking about?
I think that's-
Oh, the adaptable space. That was Bill's question.
Bill, and then he also asked about the entrances on Okemos Road.
Bill, I would like to ask you to give me a shout, and it'd be a whole lot easier for me to share some drawings with you and point at some pictures than it would be to try to describe tonight what you're asking. So, Bill's got my number, so Bill, give me a call, and we'll talk through this one-on-one.
The next one, maybe it's really two parts. One was if you can, or maybe Eric can talk about contamination soil, and that that was one part. They talked about the underground parking and the possible leaching. And then, and I, maybe, because we had more than one question, and maybe you could give an overall update about the parking decks, the number of parking spaces for the project.
Right. And Mike Neville, in particular, asked questions about the parking, and I know that he's asking those questions as it relates to the Masonic building and their parking. So, we're going to continue to work them in as a resident of the area. The parking decision was made primarily as an economic decision. We had a subsurface parking deck planned on Block 2, which is a southern block, for 216 spaces, and the cost came in absolutely exorbitant. And part of that is the fact that the excavation that you have to do to accommodate that is dealing, you're dealing with contaminated materials. So, we took a look as an alternative at putting above-grade decks on both blocks rather than just one below-grade deck to deliver approximately the same number of parking spaces. And the cost of that is about 60 to 70% of what the below-grade deck was going to cost us. Now, the other thing that we're relying on is the fact that the Douglas J block, once Douglas J Salon moves into their new location on the southern block, Block 2, Scott is in the process now of making some improvements to the building to move his, potentially move his corporate offices into this building once Douglas J Salon leaves. Right now, we're not treating this block as if the development of the block is imminent due to the fact that things have slowed down considerably due to the world we're in. So, we will be, once Douglas J Salon moves, we will be leasing the surface spaces on that block from Douglas J and utilizing those for the Village of Okemos, making sure that we've got proper spaces allocated to the remaining Douglas J building that's there as well as the Masonic building. So, that's the way we'll be dealing with any additional overflow parking needs, Mark, is by allowing the surface parking on that block, which is about 120 spaces or so.
Yeah. And I know you've talked to us before, but do you want to just talk a little bit about the soil contamination?
Eric, are you, where you can pop in?
All right, we've got you, Eric.
Okay, am I unmuted, Peter? Can you hear me?
Yes, you are. You're on.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, so the soils in the original plan was a mass excavation for the underground parking, and we were going to be able to remove a lot of the residual soils that were related to Block 2 outside of the existing excavation that everybody sees there right now, that hole in the ground with the sheeting and shoring. However, we were not completely remediating or removing the contaminated soils in that underground parking. It was simply to affect the redevelopment of the, for the project, the underground parking itself. And because there is still going to be significant residual contaminants left, we are going to still have to protect those buildings and the future use, end product, vertical construction with a combination of vapor mitigation systems, which is liners and active and/or passive vending systems under those buildings. So, the fact that we've now switched from the underground parking to the above-grade parking doesn't change our approach. Our approach is exactly the same, but actually has reduced costs significantly because we don't have to manage all of those contaminated soils. Now, I will say that the nice thing about what we've done to date in our partnership with not only the township, but with the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle, as they're called now, formerly the Department of Environmental Qualities, they've completed about a million-dollar cleanup of the former dry cleaner site. So, that is on Block 2, as we call it. That is the northwest corner there. That's the hole in the ground that you see. So, their goal and objective was to remove the gross source area contaminants on that block. So, that took care of predominantly the dry cleaner problems that were there. So, we're fortunate that they spent that nearly million dollars, which protects and helps protect not only the future development, but also the resources of the state, you know, being that we're upgrading or upstream, so to speak, of the Red Cedar River. So our approach is the same. It's just, we just don't have to deal with the same volume of contaminated soils. So hopefully I answered your question, Peter.
Okay. And the next one, I may have a little bit off this and Peter can correct me, the Okemos Barber Shop question. More about what was going to look like across from them and what are they going to see on that north block of Hamilton, north of Hamilton, along that frontage of Okemos Road?
Yeah, I interpreted it the same way.
Again, that, that question came from Vincent, the owner of Okemos Barber Shop, and I'm, I'm past due on introducing myself to Vincent. So I will, I will reach out to Vincent personally and, and again, I like to refer to drawings and pictures rather than try to describe anything tonight, but I will commit to reaching out to Vincent next week and addressing that.
But the intent along that, there's still commercial at the corner.
The hard corner is commercial. And then, so you're gonna, you're gonna still see the hard corner of commercial uses there that were already there. And the residential uses won't pick up until a little further north on the other, other side of a, of a pass-through. So I'll, I'll be able to represent that with some, some renderings that we've done.
Thanks, Will. I wanted to note to everybody else that we will see detailed building elevations during our site plan review process. So stay tuned for that. You'll see some, a little bit more detailed drawings when that process begins.
And we do notify surrounding property owners going through that site plan and review process. The site plan has to be approved and the sign-off from the drain commission, the road department all have to be given before building permits can be issued for them to move on. Well, I don't know if, when, one of the things is the amount of commercial space lost. Just looking at this, even with the amount that Douglas J is going to take for their site, a little over 8,000 square feet, that still gives you 24,400 square feet of commercial, which I look as pretty significant for that area down there when you compare it to some of the existing development we've already had. So people can put a perspective on it. I know Chick-fil-A, Panera, they're all about 4,500 square feet in size. They're pretty substantial restaurants. That small retail center that was just built there at Okemos and Grand River, that southeast corner where Aspen Dome is, there's five tenants in there and that's 10,000, almost 11,000 square feet with five tenants. Even if you put that much retail in, I was just doing the figure, you've still got another 4,000 left to fill.
Sure.
On that. So you know, that would still, you know, with the, where everything is going, we would like to see the commercial and we will hopefully everything is successful there.
Well, and you know, I want everyone to understand that our preference would be to have the commercial also. It, it would, you know, balance out the office use. You would think that that use is going to come back into play in some form or fashion. But unfortunately, we can't build today what we anticipate might work in three or four years when we finish. You've got to build today what you can prove will work today. And that's the, the ongoing challenge that we have. And I think this is a, this is a good, happy medium to pursue. And I think it's still a very, very high-quality, high-end, mixed-use development for this location. And you're right, Mark, the amount of, of, of square footage of commercial space far exceeds what has ever been located in the past in this same area.
Yeah, good. I'd like to go back and give anybody that still has a question the opportunity to ask it before we adjourn this meeting. So again, raise your hand or let Peter know that if you have a question, we, we'd like to answer that for you before we end this meeting. And if not, you can always contact either Peter or me. Our contact information is on the township website.
Or me.
We'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Will, did you want to say something before we got started here?
I, I just said, feel free to call me. I would, I would welcome the opportunity to talk to any of the neighbors and my, I'm, I'm transparent and my, that's what I'm going to continue to be. And I live here just like all of you do. And I want this to be a fabulous place that we can all enjoy. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that we continue to make progress.
Well, we definitely appreciate that. The, okay, I'm gonna call on trustee Pat Jackson. So township trustee Pat Jackson, you are on.
Okay, you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I first like to tell you all that I certainly, I certainly appreciate this comprehensive view of this project, which is not something I've had before, had the opportunity to hear before. Like Ms. Corey, I was concerned about the diminishing commercial space, but I was heartened by the idea that, first of all, as Amber suggested, this was more had, in, from the beginning had been intended to be office space as opposed to retail space. And that a flexibility of use was built, would be built into that, that space. And so I like that idea an awful lot. I appreciate the reasons for having to make that change. I've heard here tonight how the road changes, the power changes, the infrastructure are going to occur. I appreciate the comment that the skin of the buildings was not going to change where this adaptable space, adaptable use space was going to occur. And so I certainly appreciate all of the information and putting together all of that, that information to allay the concerns that may have arisen in, in the community. Will, when you start showing pictures and drawings, I'd like to see them. And I would say at this point that I've, I've been with this for a long time. I've been excited about it for a long time and it's very, this project continues to be very close to my heart in terms of what happens in, in Okemos. And so I've, I've still got my eye on it and I support where we are at this point and how we're moving forward.
Thank you, trustee Jackson. We have someone named Ron who very well may be our township supervisor, but you are on, Ron.
You are certainly correct. This is Ron Steika, township supervisor. I've been listening in throughout the meeting and I want to thank everybody who participated or just watched or just listened and didn't actually speak up because, you know, the involvement of our community is so important in every aspect of what we do. And throughout this project, going back now, what, three years or so, Mr. Randall and, and the whole project has been very open and very much involved with getting the community involved. And this is just one more step of doing that. The changes are, are significant, but not significant enough to require it going back to the planning commission, in my opinion, but that's just one board member. And I don't, there's been no request by anybody on the board to have it come back to us. So at this point, these are minor changes that will be adjusted by the staff, which we truly appreciate. I think in the end, people will still be happy. Hamilton Road is still going to have a village look to it, which is what we've been looking for all along. The changes are basically more along Okemos Road and they are from office to residential convertible back if needed. So I think, I think in the end, everyone is going to be very pleased. We're looking forward to something great happening here on this village corner. You know, I'm, I've been around long enough that I remember when it was a vibrant downtown, the buildings weren't great, but there was a lot to do and we're looking forward to that happening again. Appreciate Will and all of his people trying to put that back together. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor Steika. We have Vance. Vance, you're on.
Oops, sorry. Coming back second time. Vance, pocket 2226 Kent Street, Okemos. And I was just curious of how far along we are with the road commissioners to making all these changes on the left-hand turns. I know they're putting in the bridge, but my understanding that all the serious, the real established development by, on the road is, is already taken care of. And that bridge improvement will only go to say the end of the, of the park there. And I have not really heard any serious understanding by the road commission that they're on board for putting in these left turns. Thank you.
Thanks, Vance. And we have Laura Dietrich. Laura, you're on. You want to be sure to unmute yourself if you haven't already. Okay, Laura removed her hand. So we'll move on from Laura. That's all I've got. Okay. Will, do you want to comment on real briefly Vance's follow-up question about roads?
Yes, but it's a, it's an ongoing conversation with the road commission. Actually, I see Derek Perry on the line tonight too. He's with, he's the, with, with the township and he's been very much involved in these conversations. It's, it's a, we, we do have buy-in from the, from the road commission on the, the roadway structure that's currently in the plan. So if you take a look at the construction plans, you can see these turn lanes that are proposing to be added at the interchange of Okemos and Hamilton. So I encourage you to take a look at the plans to understand exactly where those improvements are taking place. We're now looking at a project with the road commission that picks up just north of the bridge improvement and connects to the north of our project. And it connects to the north to a project that's proposed by DOT that will be occurring in 2022 to raise the grade and reconstruct the drainage there at the, at the Grand River, Okemos Road interchange, intersection. So the hope is that we can have a simultaneous improvement of Okemos Road, which includes the Grand River interchange to the north, all the way through the new interchange, the new bridge location to the south, down to Mount Hope Avenue. So that's the hopes that, that we're going to be able to do that at, at one time, but those conversations continue. So stay tuned, Vance, and we'll let you know how that progresses.
Thanks, Will. I see one more question from, and then we'll probably wrap up. Because we, we talked about limiting this. We're close to an hour and a half. So we have Joyce Vancouvering. Joyce, thanks for calling and you're on.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone for what to me is very important, which is the transparency. And I think that's really beneficial for the township and echo what Ron Steika had said about sharing and getting community input. The question I have is how is the funding going to work for the road improvements? And I don't know if Derek is on or-
Yeah, we'll, we'll get some people to answer that question. Do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Derek. Do any of you guys want to touch on this?
Sure, we can briefly. Will covered really what we're trying to do is really put together a holistic project. Again, the initial improvements in the downtown Okemos project, the road department's on board with those. But we are looking to extend those limits to kind of mate up with the bridge project to create more of a true transformational feel as you come in from the south. As far as funding goes, those are federal aid highway dollars that'll be utilized. So we're working with our county transportation planning group to put the project on the next tip plan. Will, as a developer, would front the, the local match that's required on federal aid projects. Non-interstate, it's 20%. So those were the discussions are going right now. But we're hoping to leverage basically local dollars with state and federal dollars to get the maximum bang out of that project and that entire corridor.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Derek. Just to remind people again, if you have any questions for us as staff, please contact us. We'll also offer questions. We'll be reviewing this. I can't tell you exactly how quickly we're going to move on making a decision on this amendment, but once we do make a decision, it will be posted to the township website. Again, contact us if you have any, any questions. Amber, Peter, anything else you want to add before we adjourn?
No, thanks to everyone that participated. I saw it looked like we had a max of 68 at one point. So we really appreciate everyone coming out and taking the time, you know, on a weeknight evening to share your thoughts on the project.
Yeah. And again, thank everyone for attending. And with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.